All right, are we, um, are we on Eli?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
All right, good morning. I've been Vice President Lizer here. I appreciate you all. It is December fourteenth. We have our updated town hall today to give you the latest news on vaccines, on the information, on the surging, the variant, Omicron, and the like from our health professionals and our president Jonathan Nez. So as we always do, open up in prayers. So we appreciate you all for joining us. Thank you, as if you would indulge. Yeah, Shazad, you and God. We thank you, Lord, for another day of life. We thank you that you fill our lungs with the breath of life, Lord. Even at that, Father, some of our people have struggled, have had endured hardship, got sick, and Lord, even many have passed away, Lord, but there you are. This virus, this pandemic, did not surprise you, Lord, but for all things, there are reasons, Lord, and for all things, even those, uh, those things are bad and negative, Father. You use it for good and for your honor. And, Lord, we ask that we could be enlightened, that give us wisdom, Lord, in which to deal with this pandemic. And I know, as we pray for that, Lord, you'll give us your grace and mercy, which is sufficient for us. So we pray peace upon the land, peace upon the people, and be with our people, Lord, that are struggling, that are enduring hardship, that have lost loved ones, Lord. We pray that your grace, which is sufficient, Lord, for us, Lord, would cover all the hurts and the pains, Lord, that are out there. And we pray healing upon the land, Lord. This time, we ask that you be with us, and we talk about information and, uh, the updates, and, uh, Lord, that, uh, you can, um, give us some wisdom in which to deal with this, to decide and to, uh, give out the information, Lord, to the people of the land, Lord, that they may be blessed. So be with us in this time. Protect all of us, Lord, Father, in our coming and in our going, Lord. And, uh, there you are in the midst of us, Lord. We're two or more gathered in your name, Father. We thank you again for that. Best blessings upon the people of the land. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen. So now, without further ado, we, uh, have Jonathan Nez, our president, the great Navajo Nation, standing in the wings. Take it away, sir.
Hey, good morning, Navajo Nation. Jonathan Nez, Navajo Nation president, coming to you from Twin Arrows, Arizona. At the Twin Arrows, uh, Resort and Casino, or it could be Casino and Resort. But if you can see behind me, that is where San Francisco Peaks usually, uh, is seen, but there's heavy clouds coming in. So the weather service is predicting, I guess it's not predicting because we see it, that there is a, a snowstorm coming in tonight. So ladies and gentlemen, our viewers, please, uh, get ready for the storm. You know, uh, call your, your elders, check up on your elders. The, the snowstorm supposed to hit around midnight, after midnight tonight, maybe even into the morning. So uh, there's gonna be snow coming, maybe even rain. So during the summer the snowstorm is here. So let's, uh, keep an eye out on, on our people throughout these next couple of days. So COVID-19 updates every Tuesdays at ten AM. So today we have Dr. Burge. We have also the vice president. We also have Dr. Jill Jim, Dr. Fowler, and Del Yazi to give you an update. Uh, you know, things are changing. We have this new variant that is coming around us. And the last update I received, there is no known Omicron variant identified here on the Navajo Nation. So that doesn't mean it will never come. It's just that we just gotta continue to be safe as we go into the Christmas holidays. Christmas is next week, uh, and let's prepare and let our people know to follow the same protocols that has helped us achieve some great things, achieving seventy-two percent now. Seventy-two percent of our Navajo residents, our Navajo people, fully vaccinated, twelve years and over. We are still, um, compiling the data for the five to eleven-year-olds, right? Because that just was recently approved. And I was, I saw in the news this morning too, and maybe Dr. Birch can talk about this, is that Pfizer may be asking for an emergency use, uh, for a, a pill now, a vaccine pill for COVID-19. Uh, and I think it's, he said it was like ninety percent, uh, effective on COVID-19, but I saw that on the news. I don't know if it's genuine news or not, but, uh, I thought I'd share that. That type of technology is starting to be available for now, uh, not just Navajo, but all, all the people when it gets approved by the CDC. Uh, and, uh, you know, we've seen some very low cases, uh, on the Navajo Nation. The who do the the a you know, we, 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 we understand that many of our Navajo people want to come home and have Christmas. Graduations are happening, by the way. Graduates, congratulations to all the colleges. I was at NAU, I was at Denech College. I'll be at ASU, you know, congratulations graduate, college graduates. And I know your, your, probably your dorm, dorm time is up and you're gonna come home. Just be safe when you come home, okay? Can maybe get tested before you go back into the house. Or wear your mask when you're in the house for a couple of weeks, just to be safe, you know, just to be safe. And then when you're having dinner, ladies and gentlemen, the first thing we do, obviously, is we're gonna take our mask off. You, you heard me say this. And I think this message is very important when we're eating. I said this during Thanksgiving. I think a lot of you followed that protocol because we didn't see a big increase in cases. When you're eating at home, you're gonna take off your mask. The best place to eat, I know it's cold, but maybe you go outside. If it's a little warm, then eat outside with others, with your family. Or if you're gonna eat indoors, do it six feet away. Do it spread out. That way, you know, you lessen the chance of catching COVID-19. And that's where the main spread is happening, family gatherings, social gatherings. Uh, let's, let's work hard. Christmas is coming. New Year's is coming. Lot of gatherings. Let's commit. Let's commit right now that we're gonna keep our people safe. We don't want to see that big spike again like we saw last year, ladies and gentlemen. I know we can do it. I know we can do it because you know why? We've done it before. Navajo people, you have done an outstanding job. Let's not, let's not let, let up, let down. Let's continue to fight strong, fight against this COVID-19. So that's our, my message to you. I'm not gonna be too long. Lot of meetings, uh, that I gotta get back on, on WebEx and Zoom, uh, but a lot of the updates are gonna be mentioned by Dr. Burge, uh, Dr. Jim, Del Yazi, giving them an opportunity to give you some updates that's happening. Just keep the numbers down. Take care of yourself. God bless you. God bless our great Navajo Nation. I have a, a cabinet member here with me too as well, Dr. Rudy Shabala, who wants, who will share with you a message as well, because he's the director, executive director for the Division of Natural Resources, Dr. Rudy Shabala.
Uh, good morning, all of you. Uh, thank you, President Jonathan Nez. I'd like to say hello to Vice President Myron Lizer, Dr. Jill Jim, whoever is also on this uh, call and on this, uh, uh, town, townhouse meeting. Uh, good morning. My name is, um, Rudy R. Shabala and, uh, the director for the Navajo Nation Division of Natural Resources. And, um, we are, we are now at Twin Arrows, um, uh, Casino Resort, uh, we're participating in the uh, grazing committee member meeting. And there's several other meetings that are happening today and, uh, I believe tomorrow as well. Uh, I left Winter Rock this morning at, um, about four, four AM, four thirty AM, and, uh, uh, between Winter Rock and Lepton, it was raining very, very hard. Unfortunately, the temperature was thirty-nine degrees. And if it was freezing or lower, it would have been snowing. The road would have been snow packed. And so, um, there's supposed to be a storm rolling into the Navajo Nation tonight, uh, Tuesday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. And, uh, a lot of us live on dirt roads. We live off main highways. And so if you, if you, if you have to travel, make sure you have extra blankets, uh, make sure you have, uh, uh, boots or shoes with tread or better yet, snow boots and gloves and extra coats and have an extra jug of water and board and some snacks, some munchies. You just never know. Be prepared. And, uh, but really, you should be at home. Stay at home. Uh, have your firewood out on some inside that's dried and already to kindle and lighten. And don't bring in, you know, wet wood because you'll have a tough time lighting your fire. And, uh, and so just all these things that are practical, that we need to be, remind each other and remind ourselves about. And right now, behind me, you used to could see, uh, the San Francisco Peaks, but, uh, the cloud is almost way down at the base of the mountain. So we have big storms on the way, and we've had freezing temperatures within the last week and more to come. So so I just wanted to say, all of you, um, uh, on this call, please be safe and please, uh, be ready for all types of weather and dress appropriately. Don't go outside with your T-shirt. Make sure you have a coat. You might accidentally lock the door behind yourself. That's happened to a lot of us. And you have to crawl at the window. And what if your windows are closed? This kind of simple things, just be very, very careful. Watch your children and watch your elders. Make sure they're warm and make sure they're safe. So thank you so much and please be safe and have a merry, merry Christmas and a happy new year. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Shabala. And yeah, that has happened to me. Locked myself out. So tomorrow, when you wake up and there's snow outside, when you're gonna do your snow bath, make sure your door is still open, okay? Or else you're gonna be having a difficult time while you're in your birthday suit trying to get back into the house. So anyway, God bless you, everybody. We're here at Twin Arrows, uh, Arizona, and back to the studios there at Winter Rock, Arizona, Vice President of the Great Navajo Nation, Myron Lizer.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President, for your updates and appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Shabala. Yeah, it's good to see you all and, uh, conducting, uh, meeting after meeting over there at Twin Arrows, as we always do. So appreciate you all there. Appreciate our president's, uh, uh, exemplary leadership in this, uh, fight again, this, this pandemic. As you know, we are all in this together. So real quick, my update, as I always bring to you, is the, uh, pandemic has at times overwhelmed the Navajo Nation, which earlier this year has had the highest infection rate per capita in the nation, if you remember. Uh, the daily number of COVID-19 positive cases has risen to sharply during the latest wave of the virus, according to the data from the Navajo Nation Department of Health. I appreciate Dr. Jim's leadership there. Um, as the Pfizer BioNTech COVID-19 vaccines roll out across the US, one year ago, the Navajo Nation received its first doses on December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and plans to administer them to healthcare workers starting the fifteenth of twen- of, uh, two thousand twenty. No, I'm sorry, the, uh, vaccine rolled out December fourteenth of two thousand twenty. Um, and so the, uh, you know, we've done a lot. Uh, our Department of Health and our health professionals have done a lot to get the vaccines into the arms of our people here. So this is all happened in, uh, you know, the last previous year here. Uh, the COVID-19 pandemic has disproportionately affected Native American populations across the country, according to the Indian Health Service, with infection rates over three and a half times higher than non-Hispanics. Uh, what, and the Anglos and also, um, Native Americans are also four times more likely to be hospitalized as a result of COVID-19. So, uh, disparity there in the, is how it affects our different ethnicities. The highest number of positive cases in the spring was reported in May two thousand twenty, with two hundred and thirty-eight reported on a single day, if you remember. In recent weeks, the number, uh, highest number reported in a single day, uh, was three hundred and ninety-eight on November twenty-first and to twenty twenty as well. In the United States, a little bit more broader, as of December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, two hundred and thirty-nine point three million people have received at least one dose of the COVID-19 vaccine. Uh, of those, two hundred and two point two million are fully vaccinated. More than fifty-four point four million people have received a COVID-19 booster. The Pfizer pill protects against severe disease, including from Omicron, according to recent studies that you heard President talk about. You'll hear some more from our health professionals here shortly. The company said the pill reduced the risk of hospitalization and death by eighty-nine percent if given within three days of the onset of, of the symptoms. It's been one year since the first vaccine dose in the, uh, United States here. So, um, as we are seeing also, uh, Pfizer BioNTech vaccine provided seventy percent of protection against severe illness and hospitalization. So when you hear people talking about, uh, you know, receiving the vaccine, and, uh, if you haven't had COVID, uh, obviously, you know, antibodies have been developed, but, uh, you'll see that, uh, the, uh, data has shown that, uh, those that do perhaps get a breakthrough case of, uh, COVID-19, uh, the virus here, uh, their symptoms and the need for hospitalization is a lot less, uh, less there. So, uh, that's some of the reasons to consider. If you're, uh, considering getting the vaccine, uh, please be studied up and, uh, do, uh, follow the research and the guidance there. In Arizona, Governor Doug Ducey announced four hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the Arizona Coronavirus Relief Fund to support the food banks throughout the state, especially rural communities. Uh, so some of you will see the, uh, uh, St. Mary's Food Bank coming to the Navajo Nation in varying locations in and around our area. So, uh, please, I, I just stay tuned to the vital updates here. They'll be able to, uh, give you those, uh, places where, uh, St. Mary's Food Bank and others will be dropping food off here on the Navajo Nation. This funding, which will be dispersed by the Arizona Food Bank Network, will, uh, support organizations in those rural areas which traditionally lacked access to funding streams available to larger counties. In total, more than forty organizations that have applied for grants in thirteen rural counties are protect, uh, projected to receive funding. So it's all hands on deck mentality. We appreciate those that are helping, uh, again, volunteering and bringing food, bringing aid, bringing PPEs, bringing all that to the Nav- people, Navajo people here on our nation. So the recent news, one million, three hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight of, uh, residents in Arizona have, uh, tested positive. And of those, two thousand one hundred and sixty-eight have been, uh, the new cases here, uh, to show, uh, as of this morning here. Batsi County, fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four with twenty-one new cases to report. Uh, the, uh, Navajo County, twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one with sixty-two, three new cases to report. And Coquenino County, twenty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven with thirty-four new cases to report. In Colorado, as of Monday, the state's seven-day positivity rate was six point eight five percent, which is down from eight point six two percent positivity rate measures, the amount of COVID-positive tests to the total amount of tests taken. Uh, COVID-19 positivity rates and incident rates are also down this week. Uh, so that's their latest update, uh, from Colorado. Eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-two the last nineteen months with six hundred and nineteen total new cases here as of this morning. New Mexico, in the Mexico State, health officials have detected the first case of Omicron variant in the state. And the Mexico Department of Health says the variant was found in a woman from Bernaleo County this past Sunday. The state's seven-day positivity rate is ten point six percent, a little bit higher than Colorado. So nineteen months into this pandemic, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight with two thousand, five hundred and sixty-one new cases to report. San Juan County, twenty-seven, six hundred, uh, twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-two with one hundred and seventy new cases to report. McKinley County, seventeen thousand, one hundred and ninety-four with forty-six new cases to report. Utah rounding out our tri-state area, since February first, two thousand twenty-one, people who are unvaccinated are at fifteen times greater risk of dying from COVID-19. Nine, nine point four times greater risk of being hospitalized due to COVID-19 and three point six times greater risk of testing positive for COVID-19 than vaccinated people. The rolling seven-day average for, uh, percent positivity of people over people is fourteen point five percent. The rolling seven-day average for, uh, per, uh, percent positivity over of tests, over test is nine point seven percent. Total positive cases nineteen months into this pandemic, six hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and fifty, uh, with, uh, I guess, uh, the numbers weren't updated, but, uh, I'm sure there's some new cases to report there. San Juan County, two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four over the last nineteen months, and our own Utah Naval Health System reporting one thousand, three hundred and seventy there nineteen months into this. In closing, getting a flu vaccine is easy and safe and free at many locations. Remember to get your flu vaccine while you're doing that to reduce the further stress on our healthcare workers and hospitals. Check, uh, uh, check this off your to-do list today. Uh, get your COVID-19 booster by December seventeenth to be fully protected in time for New Year's Eve. It takes two weeks for a booster dose of the COVID-19 vaccine to build protection. And lastly, if you are experiencing any COVID symptoms, you should get tested and even if you're, uh, vaccinated and stay home and, uh, continue to keep all of our loved ones safe here as we are all in this, this together. So we appreciate Adam Gay and, um, uh, Eli there, Leslie in our office for giving, uh, the, you, the updates there for, and what it looks like in our tri-state area and the counties in and around the Navajo Nation. So appreciate Jonathan Nez, our president, there, uh, continuing to work for the people as we all are. Appreciate our division directors, all our health professionals. Continue prayers for you all. Appreciate you all again. And, uh, just looking forward to being able to, uh, life to get back to normal again. And we know you all are doing the same. But as we do that, please continue to be safe, be vigilant of, uh, your area surroundings and those that perhaps are coming, you know, from, uh, reservation sites, uh, just continue to wear your mask, sanitize your hands, and again, be safe. So up going it. And we appreciate you all. Uh, look forward to, uh, seeing you all again soon and very soon. And, uh, ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Jill Jim, uh, director of our Navajo Department of Health, to give us updates there and what it looks like here, uh, of Omicron. And also our health professionals there, uh, Dr. Burge there, Del Yazi, your F E team. And, uh, we appreciate Dr. Val as well and all of the timely updates that they'll be giving to you. So up going it and until we meet again, see one another on virtual or in person there in Winter Rock, Arizona. So we shall see you soon. Ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Jill Jim.
Thank you, Vice President. Good morning to you. Um, safe travel wherever you're going. I'm Dr. Jill Jim. I am the Executive Director for Navajo Department of Health. On Siskis, I, um, just want to transition to English here. I just want to thank all the listeners here on the call and I know that the teammates here that I have, we work with them on a daily basis with the Health Command Operations Center and um, they will have a lot to say about Omicron and just the continuing, um, holiday messaging we'll have. Um, we will have a KTNM forum on Thursday, so tune in at six PM to KTNN and we'll have, um, sort of a recap of COVID-19 and, um, regarding twenty twenty-one and just the ongoing messaging around, um, holiday gathering. So, um, the main message I want to just convey to everyone is, as we're going into the holidays, as President mentioned, I know a lot of us will reiterate this, is just to make sure that, um, we're looking out for ourselves and people around us. And that means all the tools that we have learned. How do we, um, make those decisions every single day when we, um, approach, um, gathering with other individuals outside our households or when we're doing errands? Um, and those are all very important, but we know the now that there are vaccines, um, for most age, um, individuals aged five years and older, if you haven't got a vaccine, a booster shot, staying, um, aware of your surroundings by physical distancing, masking up, and also making sure that, um, you seek treatment and um, I hope that Dr. Burge and Dr. Val can kind of talk about the, um, importance of getting treatment early because that can help reduce hospitalizations. Right now, we continually monitor hospitalizations here on Navajo Nation, and we have had a hundred percent ICU capacity at times and for those that are critically ill, and we don't want to be in that situation. Um, we also don't want to overwhelm our healthcare systems. Our healthcare providers have been going at this for almost two years, and we want to just remind ourselves, what can we do as individuals every single day to make sure that we stay safe and that we prevent, um, um, from getting COVID-19. And that means taking all those, um, precautions that we have been saying over and over. So um, I'm just gonna end here and I just want to give time to, um, Dr. Burge and then Dr. Val. But I just wanted to say good morning to everyone and thank you for tuning in. And yeah, so Dr. Burge, take it away.
Sure. Thank you. I'm Dr. Jim and thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President. Um, I am Dr. Burge. I am a pediatrician in Tubac City and leading the F E response team here in Tubac City, also helping with the Navajo Nation response. So I wanted to touch base, um, explain a little bit some of the treatment options that are available for COVID. Um, I think it's important to note that the best thing you can do to help, um, avoid a severe illness with COVID is to get vaccinated. Um, so first and foremost, make sure you have your initial vaccine as well as your booster dose. That is incredibly important. Um, however, compared to earlier in the pandemic when we didn't have some treatment options, we do have some options that are available now and then some, um, that will be available in the near future. So if somebody, um, is diagnosed with COVID, um, so they test positive, and we have something called monoclonal antibodies. And these, um, help your body block the virus, um, from entering your cells. And it's really, really important, as actually I mentioned, to get this as soon as possible after you test positive, um, because that's um, how it will work the best, um, to help prevent you from having, um, severe illness. So, um, these medications have been shown to reduce the risk of hospitalization and death in people who have mild to moderate, um, COVID illness. Um, unfortunately, it's not an option if somebody is already very sick with COVID. So if they already have low oxygen and are being admitted to the hospital, these medications can't be used. these medications can't be used. Um so it's really for, if you're starting to feel sick, you get tested early and you test positive and then these monoclonal antibodies could be an option. The good news is that they work for Delta variant and they also are thought to work for the Omicron variant. And we're still learning more and more about the Omicron variant. Um so currently we have um IV uh monoclonal antibodies available. Um and so they are given at the healthcare facilities. Um you come and get an IV placed and then get the infusion. Um and then are monitored after the infusion for about an hour. So overall, it's about a three hour visit to get the medication. The main monoclonal antibody that we have available now is called Regeneron or Regen Covey. Um and it is, you know, it's thought to be effective against Delta and hopefully against Omicron as mentioned. Um there's also another one that we called um B A M E for short. These medications are full forms, have very long difficult to say names. Um but there are um, you know, Regeneron is really the main one that I believe is being used across Navajo Nation at this point. Um so as a reminder, um test early if there are any symptoms. Um talk with your healthcare facility or call if you haven't been offered the medication, um to try to get scheduled for it as soon as possible. Um it has to be within ten days of when the symptoms start. If it's already been with it more than ten days or if you um an individual is sick with low oxygen, they no longer qualify for this medicine. Um and as President um Nez mentioned, there are some pill options or oral options um that will likely be available in the coming weeks to months. Um there's one um called Malnus Piravir um and that is a Merck product that isn't yet available on Navajo Nation that I know of. And the Pfizer one seems really promising. It's called Paxlovid. Um and that um is also one that would have to be taken very, very soon after symptoms start. So within three to five days of when somebody starts to feel sick. Um and that one's awaiting full or F D A approval under emergency use authorization. Um so again, once it does become available, it'll be even more important. Um if you do feel sick, if you have an exposure, to get tested as soon as possible um so that you could get that medication within three to five days. And lastly, I just want to mention there is um one that uh may be available and that was just approved um under emergency use authorization for the F D A. That's a what's called a pre-exposure prophylaxis. Um and this one's called Evo Shield. It's for very high risk individuals who don't have COVID and haven't been exposed um that can help prevent them um from having severe illness. So um that was just approved last week. Um we're working on getting it here to Navajo Nation, um but could help some of our most high risk individuals. So um again, most importantly, get vaccinated, get your booster vaccine and that'll be the best chance to help reduce any sort of severe illness from COVID. Um if you do um or somebody you know does test positive for COVID, um make sure that they're reaching out to healthcare facility to ask about these monoclonal antibodies or treatments that can help further reduce the risk of hospitalization. So I just wanted to emphasize that today. Um I will now um pass to Dr. Val um to share more information. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. Um and thank you so much, Dr. Burridge. And for those of you who may not be familiar with me, um my name is Dr. Val. I am one of the public health um medical epidemiologists as well as um providers here at Chinley Service Unit. Um but I also have been working on the unified front with our Navajo Nation partners um as well as area office. And so um I'm part of area office. And one thing I want to stress is that, you know, our I H S area team have since the beginning of this pandemic um for the last nineteen months, I heard, right? Um we have been working very closely with our Navajo Nation partners um with the Office of the President, Vice President, with, you know, Navajo Nation Department of Health, as well as with our um partners at the Navajo Epicenter. And we do this because we want to make sure that we are um, you know, we are communicating um as a team and trying to provide the best guidance and recommendations to the entire Navajo Nation. Um and so one of the things that we, as Dr. Burridge has discussed and Dr. Jim and, you know, of course, Vice President Lizer and um our um President Nez has discussed is, you know, the first thing we've been trying to do is test broadly and make sure that testing is accessible and available to anyone who needs it, who wants it, who just wants to know their status. Um and so our area office team has been working to try to ensure that testing is accessible to all facilities. Um you know, in regards to how we're asking these tests to be used is that the first, the first thing that was discussed was, you know, how do you gather safely? Um and one of the ways you can gather safely is using a home rapid test. And so you might have heard about this already. And so you know, it is recommended that if you are gathering and one of the ways you can reduce your risk of transmission to others, other than if you're symptomatic, please stay home. But if you're not symptomatic and you're not really, you know, you want to make sure that you or those that you've invited um aren't, aren't, you know, silently um infected, then then you might consider a rapid home test. Um and that will, what they will do is that it will pick up if you're shedding virus and potentially contagious virus, it can pick up on on those that are not symptomatic but may may be infected unknowingly. Um and doing it right before the gathering is on. Um so that's one way to use a rapid home test and to gather safely. The other thing that um we want everyone here to understand and know that is also available to them is testing and treating. Um and what that means is that regardless of vaccine status, we know that there are breakthrough infections. What is a breakthrough infection? That is that is somebody who is fully vaccinated with two doses of Moderna or Pfizer or they are fully vaccinated with one dose of Johnson and Johnson. But you know, they after fourteen days of completing the series, they become infected. Um that is what is called a breakthrough infection. Um and so regardless of vaccine status, anybody is eligible for treatment. And so if you are symptomatic on the uh like at the very initial onset of symptoms, regardless of your vaccine status, please um you know, test and then reach out to your provider and see if you're eligible for treatment. As Dr. Burridge mentioned, we currently have treatment now um that can reduce your risk of severe disease um and reduce your risk of ending up in the hospital or or even worse, right? And so if you have the the very onset of symptoms, please go ahead and test and if it's positive, please reach out to your provider and see if you're eligible for treatment. Um and the treatment that currently exists are the monoclonal antibody infusion treatment. And then in the next coming weeks to months, we will be able to expand that further out and to include those oral antivirals as well. And so our area office team is working closely with our I H S facilities, but also with our um Navajo Nation facilities as well to make sure that there's a plan that people can have access to test, but if they are positive, they can also have access to treatment. And it's really critical, like I said, that time um turnaround is very critical to have that treatment to be as effective as possible. Um and so at the initial onset of symptoms, please go heading and go ahead and get tested because we do have treatment available to reduce those severe disease. Um and then lastly, you know, I do want to, you know, just again in brief, talk about like how we do work across as a unified front um to vaccinate anyone who's unvaccinated um and to booster anybody who's eligible for a booster. And so, you know, as this time, even with the Omicron variant, I know there's still a lot to be um answered. But we, you know, the public health community, the clinical medical community, everyone expects it to be um the vaccines to still remain protective and effective. And so please, you know, right now, vaccines are eligible for anyone five years and older. Okay? Um and so any of your family members, any of your friends, um if you can share that message, let them know that anyone who's five years and older is now eligible for a vaccine, please let them know that we are across our facilities, that we are making that available to the community members. Um booster shots, as of recently, uh boosters have become very critical in in, you know, start countering um what we're seeing in terms of like these break increasing breakthrough infections. Um but really also to make sure and protect people and reduce our risk of severe illness. That's really our number one priority. And so if you have received a two dose series um more than six months ago, so Moderna or Pfizer more than six months ago, and guess what? If you're sixteen or older, you are now eligible for a booster shot. And that's really critical going into the holiday season, knowing that, you know, people will gather um and that we are expecting as a result, you know, we do expect that there will be some level of transmission and to fully protect yourself and to protect others, please get a booster shot. And that's expected to be protective against Delta and protective against Omicron as well. Um and so, yes, vaccines and boosters still remain the number one way to prevent disease, especially severe disease um and also to lower the risk of transmission to our high risk family members and friends. And so this holiday season, um you know, if you can do a rapid test before gathering, please do. Um you know, if you can encourage anyone in your family, yourself, your family or friends to get vaccinated or boosted, please do as well. And keep in mind, if you are just, you know, and if you start to have symptoms, don't hesitate, go ahead and get a test um because we do have treatment um options available to everyone out there. Thank you so much. And I believe at this time, it will be either Dr. Fowler or Dell.
It'll be me, Dr. Val.
Yes, and so I want to introduce my um co-lead in our um um F E team, um Dell Yazir. Thank you so.
Okay. Thank you, uh Dr. Val for the introduction and hello team and all the folks who are on the call. Um thank you for your time. My name is Dell. I'm at the Navajo Epidemiology Center. And also as uh uh co-lead with Dr. Val as part of our X U C Unified Epidemiology Team for COVID on the Navajo Nation. So I'm going to provide an update on our data gating measures for Navajo Nation from uh November twenty sixth to December ninth. It's a two week time period uh for our analytical time period. This is our sixty day time window for recent cases and trends. Um and so here's you know, these bars are there, there's fluctuations every day the number of daily cases that we track over time. But the red line is our nine day weighted center moving average. It's just uh connecting some of these data points together so that you can, that we can see the trend a little better. Um with all the fluctuations every day, this red line gives us a better um view of what the trend um is over time. So as you can see, this highest bar here is November eighth. And so for a little over a month, we've been kind of going down on this downward trend and we did a little, a little spike here. This is uh over, you know, the uh Thanksgiving and the holiday uh where we saw a little bit of a increase in cases. Doctor or President Nez has mentioned, you know, over family gatherings, during over holidays is a one of the biggest um reasons or risks for increase in COVID cases that we see um from an epidemiology standpoint. And then since then, um I believe this is November twenty eighth. Since then, we've been going down on this downward trend. So we are, if you look at this um axis here, we are at about uh fifty to sixty cases a day, especially over this last reporting time period. We are seeing um currently uh less number of pieces every day, which is a great, a great sign. And then our seven day infection rate is at one point zero four. Our threshold is at one, so we're just right there, like right above it. And we'll just continue to monitor the infection going forward. This is our map uh spatially, looking at COVID burden across Navajo Nation and then including our bordering states. So over a seven day time period from December third to the ninth, we had four hundred and seven new cases. So this is uh down from about ah about six hundred, six hundred and fifty cases the last reporting period. So it is much less than the last, the last time. So which again is a great sign, uh which puts our seven day case rate at two hundred and fifty seven cases, four hundred thousand people. Then here on the nation, uh you see a lot of orange here for all the, most of the service areas where I access and um tribal health organizations. Um Chinley is the only one with this uh red um with uh with an in seven day incidence uh case rate of four hundred plus cases, four hundred thousand people. So they are Chinley service areas um seeing a lot of uh COVID cases. And then for defiance, um with the least um amount of cases occurring in this service area. Um so and then New Mexico is also the state of New Mexico. Also seeing a lot of uh COVID cases currently, so they're in the red as well. Um so this is our current situation um within Navajo Nation and with our our bordering state. Some additional metrics here are seven day positivity rate um is at twelve point four percent. This also decreased from about sixteen percent last week. So again, this is also a good sign. There are the testing going on on the nation. There were about nine hundred and fifteen average daily tests were conducted every day over seven day period. There are testing going on at all the facilities on Navajo Nation. Hospital capacity, this is a regular hospital beds is at sixty eight percent. Um average daily occupancy. And then for the ICU beds is eighty eight. Our threshold for this is eighty percent. So we are a little above it. And we are um closely um monitoring this as we uh move forward um in the week. Contact tracers to daily case ratios at three. Our threshold for this is five. So we are still below five. Then we were at one at one point, so we did go up a little bit as we, you know, added more contact tracers on the Navajo Nation. So we are, uh it's good to see that we're going back up, but we're, we'd like it to be at five or above five. So um we'll again monitor this as well going forward. This is our latest vaccine uh numbers for Navajo Nation residents only. There are a hundred and twelve thousand fifty nine people on the Navajo Nation who have been fully vaccinated. Of that, you know, total population is fifty percent fully vaccinated. Eligible residents ages twelve years and older is now at seventy two percent fully vaccinated. These numbers that did go up um by one percentage point. This was at fifty nine percent. So it went to sixty. This was at seventy one to seventy two. So people are uh getting vaccinated, but we need more, more people to get vaccinated um so that we can get these percentage numbers um continue to go up. So this is our epicures for the entire pandemic. Um just over here on the right side, the blue line is the U S. Uh there are still increasing cases currently uh across the the U S. The orange line is Navajo Nation. So you see this downward trend for this latest reporting period. We are seeing less cases. Again, that is a great sign. We are seeing about sixty, on average, about sixty cases a day for at least for this last reporting period. So hopefully, this trend will continue to go down. This is our seven day incidence uh case uh rate uh comparing Navajo Nation to the fifty states and a couple jurisdictions. The yellow line here is Navajo Nation. We are at twenty ninth uh position compared to the fifty states. So we we were at six position last week to now twenty ninth. So we did trend the right way. Again, that is a great sign. But the red bars are for bordering states. New Mexico, as I mentioned, seeing a lot of COVID cases currently. So they're uh top five here um comparing uh to other states across the U. This is a seven day case rate um picture across the U S uh just within our region, you know, New Mexico and Arizona. Um also seen uh still a high number of COVID cases. We did change color here as Navajo Nation was uh less cases time around. So we went from darker shaded blue to a lighter shade blue here for uh our incident seven day case rate or in this range, two hundred and sixty nine to three hundred and forty three uh cases per hundred thousand. So again, that's also uh good sign. The trans community transmission uh for COVID across the U S is still for the most part red for high transmission uh including our region here, all the counties within Navajo Nation uh continue to be red color, meaning the high COVID transmission. This is our, this was just updated last night, uh report thirty three for our COVID strain surveillance on the Navajo Nation. And this is a just comparing report. And this is, uh, just comparing report thirty-two to thirty-three. Again, the only change here is the Delta variant. Um, this row here, it went from eight hundred and forty to nine hundred and fifty-one. So that's a hundred and eleven new cases have been identified with the Delta variant um, on the Navajo Nation. And there's still, you know, there's no Omicron variant, um, identified on the, on the Navajo, on the nation. And all the other numbers, the other variants, all the numbers remain the same. So as of today or yesterday, one thousand two hundred and thirty-six cases on the Navajo Nation have been identified with a variant of concern or a variant that is being monitored currently. This was updated this morning to, um, December twelfth or eleventh, which is last Saturday. You know, the orange bar is the Delta variant, which continues to be the predominant variant across the US. One thing to note is here, the Omicron variant here in purple color starting to emerge onto this surveillance. So it's now like two point nine percent, last week was zero percent. This week it's, uh, two point nine percent. So there are cases that Omicron, uh, variant cases starting to emerge across the US. This is the high-risk factor um, slide. These are the fifty-eight new chapters that made the week. Um, it's over a two-week time period, November twenty-sixth to December ninth. Fifty-eight new chapters. Then if you go across this way across time, this red, the red, um, column here is, uh, uh, over a six-week time period since October twenty-ninth. These twenty-two chapters have been on this list, uh, for six consecutive weeks at least. Uh, some have been on here for more than that, so a lot of these chapters, um, they're located geographically on the nation where, you know, I think there's that high traffic, you know, through ways to get from one part of the rez to the other. Some of them are near, uh, border towns such as Fruitland, Upper Fruitland, near Farmington. So, you know, these are some of the characteristics that, that we see among these chapters. And these chapters also, for the most part, are bigger, um, by population. So it's just some things to note for this, um, these twenty-two chapters. Uh, risk level assessment here, our cases remain high, although we're seeing less cases this time around. There are still a high number of cases for, for Navajo Nation. Our test positivity remains high at twelve percent. And then our public health capacity as far as contact tracers remain insufficient. Our, our threshold is five, is at nine, so we're still below five, and it's, um, it's still, uh, insufficient. Our hospital capacity, you know, we, this ICU bed percentage here is, um, is something that we're continuing to closely monitor, um, going forward. And last, we are, where are we right now as far as our Navajo Nation AD matrix and our public health response to COVID on Navajo Nation? We remain in the red for all these indicators that I just, uh, went over. Cases testing, public health capacity, hospital capacity. So we are, um, in the red as far as our AD matrix for Navajo Nation. So, um, that's our update today. I'm going to stop here and hand it over to Shama, Dr. Fowler. Uh, please take it away, Dr. Fowler, thank you.
...